Order at 6:00 PM. Will Commissioner Listo please lead us in the invocation and pledge to the flag?
I will, Madam Mayor, thank you. Please rise for Pratt. Our Most Gracious Heavenly Father, we come humbly before you in a time of national tragedy. The deaths and terrible injuries suffered by the victims of the Las Vegas shootings and the multiple hurricanes burden our hearts, a burden that is shared throughout our nation. We pray that you will comfort the families of those injured or killed and welcome those who died into your heavenly kingdom. We also pray that you will provide comfort for those who lost their homes and for those that are otherwise suffering. We are hopeful that your grace and your love will be with those who have suffered and with those who are present here tonight who share their pain and loss. Always in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the interim city clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Listo?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Oakley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Present.
Mayor Black?
Here. Before we get started, I just want to address the fact that we're having public comment at the end of the meeting. I know there are two thoughts on that. Some people like to have public comment and then just, you know, leave and go home and not listen to the meeting. And other people would like to have public comment at the end because, you know, we want to sit and listen to the meeting. But there are two ways that can go. And I'd also like to address the fact that it was said that of the commissioners that were newly elected, none of them have attended the meetings prior to being elected. And I have attended every single meeting for the past 21 months. And, you know, I just think people need to be careful about what they're saying. And Commissioner Dalther, Vice Mayor Dalther suggested we do this at the end and try it out, and so that's what we're doing. It's not necessarily going to stay that way, we'll just see how it goes.
Point of order though, Madam Mayor, I bring up a point of order, I'm not sure we can do this legally. We didn't make a resolution on the handbook, in the policy handbook. There has to be a resolution read at a public meeting before we can change this order of this meeting. We can't just decide one week to change it and have it changed.
Madam Attorney?
You did decide at a workshop by consensus that you would temporarily try this out, and even though by resolution you have not adopted your new, your new policy handbook or update for your code of conduct, we can go ahead and make an amended update to the code of conduct that for temporarily, the public comment can be moved to the end of the meeting if you so choose. And that can be read into the consent agenda for that adoption and that resolution. Otherwise, you can certainly do it separately by resolution at a later time. It's completely up to the commission how they'd like to proceed.
So we can put it under today's consent agenda to do that?
You can amend the consent agenda for the Board of Commissioners' policy handbook update to make it the amended Board of Commissioners' policy handbook update code of conduct with a temporary, a temporary adjustment for the proceedings in a meeting with public comment to be featured at the end for a temporary period of time until such time as the commission wishes it to be permanent.
All right.
But I would suggest putting a date on that for, say, the remainder of 2017 or some set time period until such a concrete resolution can be passed by this board.
Okay.
It just seems to me that that resolution should have been passed the meeting after the election. That's when it should have been passed, and it wasn't passed. And so we not only broke the charter then, we're breaking the charter again by doing that. Because in this charter, it says that you have to follow this rule. And if you go back under the consent agenda that's in front of us tonight, you can see that the, that the procedure is certainly, that public input's in the middle of the, in the middle of the meeting. I just don't think we should change it, Madam Mayor, not tonight.
Well, I would agree that the charter, not the policy guidelines, the charter states that the rules of procedure should be adopted annually after the election. So I do agree that that needed to be done, and it has not been done. It's been workshopped for quite some time now.
And so we're only filing the charter again by doing this tonight, so let's just put it back to where it was.
And I would disagree, it doesn't violate the charter. To do that, I think it would just violate your rules of procedure, which are an administrative guideline. And, and I think that if you did an amended resolution, it could be fine, but it's completely up to this board how you wish to proceed.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Any more comment? All right, we'll proceed. So next we have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any comments from Commissioner's staff? Interim City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Listo?
No.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next we have the approval of the minutes as listed in, on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion for the approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have one. Back on September 26th at the workshop, it was item F, Goals and Objectives for BOC Commissioners that Set forth for the city. In the minutes that are printed out on this form here, the second to the last sentence said, "The commission seemed to like this new approach towards the budget development." I did not, and I felt like my comment should have been made in the minutes on this also. Thank you.
Madam Attorney, can we amend the minutes for that?
You can make a motion, well, if you want to amend the, excuse me, if you would like to amend the minutes, then there needs to be a motion to accept the minutes as amended. The motion that's on the table right now is to accept the minutes as they stand. So that motion either needs to be withdrawn, or it needs to be voted on before another motion can be made.
Okay, I'll withdraw it. And then go ahead and do the approval of the minutes.
Now you can approve with the amended, correct.
Okay, I'd like to do the approval of the minutes with the correction done to item number F from the September 26th workshop. Stating my own views on this.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Interim City Clerk?
Commissioner Listo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Okay. Next I would like Jay Hatch from the Rec Department and the Madeira Beach Babes Softball Team to join me at the podium.
Face that way, face that way. Face the crowd.
First of all, just congratulations, and I'm going to hand this to Mr. Hatch, who wants to say a few words about the wonderful winners.
In front of us, we have the members of the U-12 Madeira Beach Riptide softball team. They finished first in our district this past season, and then carried that to fourth place in the state, in which I have been told by numerous folks is one of the toughest divisions in the state. So they've come from, members of this team were the first softball team to return to this complex in over 20 years. And now we have this team as well as six others that participate, softball alone out there. They carry more in the softball league than they do in, in the leagues past. So, you know, we appreciate everything that Coach Darren, Coach Ben, and Coach Don have done to bring these girls out here, coach, spend their time. You've probably seen Darren around, if you don't see him here, he's over at the soccer field. And if you don't see him here or there, he's probably somewhere else helping us out. So he's one of the many volunteers amongst a 20-member board. They've got family members that are on the board that are helping us out. So it really is a dream come true from our rec staff, Mr. Andrews, and our vision as long as theirs, to get to the point we are and continue to grow. They've got over 200 kids participating with four games alone going on tonight. So we want to thank them, congratulate them, and present them the key to the city for their accomplishments and everything they've done.
All right, our next presentation is the Annual Fire Prevention Proclamation, and I would like Lieutenant Armshur to please join me at the podium.
Well, all of you.
City of Madeira Beach Mayor's Proclamation. Whereas the City of Madeira Beach, Florida is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Madeira Beach, and whereas US fire departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and whereas US home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority, 78% of all US fire deaths. Whereas a home fire escape plan provides the skillset, know-how to quickly and safely escape a fire home situation. And whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the room, in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everybody in the home will meet upon exiting. Whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household. And whereas practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. And whereas Madeira Beach first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Madeira Beach residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2017 Fire Week theme, Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out, effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Therefore, I make Maggie Black, Mayor of Madeira Beach, to hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. I urge all the people of Madeira Beach to find or develop a home fire escape plan with all members of your household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Madeira Beach Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week 2017, on this 10th day of October 2017. Excuse me. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for everything. I just want to say thank you for everything you do to serve and protect our community. Thank you very much. Want to say something?
Thank you again, Mayor. Just wanted to mention again that obviously it's Fire Prevention Week. Make sure your detectors, you've replaced the batteries, make sure you have a plan, if you have kids especially, and check your fire extinguishers. And if you have any issues, call your fire department, and we'll come out and check it, make sure it's safe. Because if we can prevent an emergency, it's a lot better to prevent one before it happens. Thanks.
All right, the next presentation we have is a penny for Pinellas referendum. Josh Boatwright? Oh, okay, welcome.
Please bear with me, this is my first time doing this presentation, and I hope you find it very informative. So what is the penny? The penny is a one cent sales tax, and it's been building a better Pinellas County since 1990. The penny funds long-term infrastructure improvements such as bridges, roads, drainage improvements, parks, and public safety improvements such as emergency vehicles, fire stations. And this November 7th, residents will have the opportunity to vote for the renewal of the penny. Some penny facts, it's a 1% sales tax, it's, one-third of it is paid by tourists. This is an important thing, it offsets our property tax and accomplishes much infrastructure improvements for us. The penny is not charged on groceries and medicines, and only for the first $5,000 on a single purchase. It stays local. 100% of the penny that is collected comes back to residents and the communities in Pinellas County. The penny is equivalent to 2.4 mils property tax for the average home, that's $314 per year savings in property tax. The penny is used to leverage funding from, of many of our projects from outside sources such as the Florida Department of Transportation, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the Federal Highway Administration, FEMA, and others. Many of these agencies are quite generous in their match, often being more than 50%. So the penny indeed does leverage a lot of improvements in our community. It should be noted, the penny is only for infrastructure improvements. And when we talk about infrastructure, we're talking about buildings, roads, things that we can touch. But also, one thing that some people don't think of as infrastructure is our public safety infrastructure. For example, the emergency vehicles that we require, and the communication systems that allow our first responders to respond during an event like Irma. The penny revenue is by inter-local agreement divided up equally by, based on population, between the county and the 24 municipalities, including Madeira Beach. This slide shows some of the things that we do with the penny. Basically, we do roads, bridges, and trails. Safe, secure community is another area. Again, that's fire stations, emergency shelter space, communication towers, water quality, flood and sewer protection. This is a new item for us, is the sewer protection. You probably read in the newspaper about the spills in St. Petersburg and elsewhere. This is, a lot of that is from excessive stormwater flooding in the water, over the roads, over the manholes that are part of the sanitary collection system. And this water is entering and surcharging the sanitary system and ultimately our wastewater treatment plants. So this is a renewed, this is a large focus on the next penny to improve this area. Roads, bridges, and trails projects, proposed projects between 2020 and 2030, mainly intended to improve lanes, give us more capacity on our roads, but also to rehabilitate and resurface roads, improve intersections with new lighting and timing, to add sidewalks and ADA, make things more accessible for people with disabilities, and to add to our recreational network of trails and sidewalks, bike lanes. See, here on the picture, you see some examples of the Park Boulevard Bridge, Drawbridge, which some of you may remember when it was first done, there was tolls, they've long been since removed, the toll, and now it's free. And golf beach projects, and we'll see a couple examples of those as we move on. Water quality, flood, and sewer spill prevention. So when we talk about this category, these are, I'm in the stormwater vegetation division, so these are the projects I primarily work with, and Lisa works on many of these as well. The, these are your traditional drainage and flood improvement projects, replacing aging pipes, taking care of ditches. They require an extensive amount of maintenance. The penny does not fund maintenance, I want you to understand that, it's for capital improvements. But sometimes we'll do a, a major improvement to a ditch, which could be seen as, considered extreme maintenance, to make it so that it's more cost-effective to maintain it long-term. So doing it right. The other type of things we do, water quality treatment systems, regional retention, regional stormwater, these are identifying sites where we can partner with other parties and provide stormwater for them. And as I mentioned earlier, the prevention of stormwater, you know, areas of flood, there's water over the ground, and in many cases, that's water over our sanitary collection system. So preventing those sewer overflows. The slide shows some of the past projects that we've done. One of my favorites is the Fort De Soto Water Recirculation Project. This is a little bridge we added right before you get to the very end of the road that leads out to Fort De Soto, where I kind of think like you go north or south from there. The water on each side was very stagnant, there was no flow going through there. So we added a circulation bridge. Now if you go out there, the water temperature is much lower, it's cooler, the fish are more abundant, the seagrass is healthier. It's an example of one of those projects. Projects for a safe, secure community. The proposed projects are to replace fire stations, replace law enforcement vehicles, add emergency shelter space, replace emergency communication radio towers, and improve animal shelter facilities. An example of some of the past projects we've done are shown there. They include the Public Safety Complex, which is up on Walsingham Road or Almerton Road. And that allows us to communicate, and it's where we, it's our command center. When we get a major event like an Irma or a Hermine, we have, in one place, we have representation from all the municipalities. We have our emergency management leaders, we have law enforcement staff there, and this is a structure that's built to withstand a category five storm. So it's safe and secure, and it's self-sustaining, and has its own generation system. So we can stay moving forward and be responsive during a terrible catastrophic event. Preserving Parks and our Environment. We'll see park facility upgrades, and by golly, that one looks the one, the shoulder on the top right looks similar to the one that's out here at the War Veterans Memorial or at VFW Park, but it could be another one. More closely, Archibald Memorial Park, where many of you may go out once in a while and listen to Mark play some music on Friday or Saturday night. And it's a great place. Community Vitality Projects. And I want to stress that these are infrastructure projects. So this is projects such as, those intended to improve the character of a neighborhood, streetscaping, and things, making it a more desirable place to be and live, to work, open a business. But also facilities like libraries, recreation centers, where people can collaborate and do things and live, enjoy. So if you want more information, if you're on social media, just do hashtag Penny for Pinellas, or simply go to our website. And Lisa, she's going to guide you through some of the things on our website.
I'm sorry, I think the gist of this is that this is not a new thing, this is just to renew it for the next 10 years, and it helps keep our property taxes a little bit lower, because obviously we need to do these projects to make Pinellas awesome. So it's going to come out of somewhere, and this would be a good place for it to come out of, since about a third of it comes from the tourists anyhow. And as you know, they just updated the evacuation zones. I hope you all checked yours if you don't live on the island, because if you're on the island, you're an A. But this is the other reason we're hardening some of the, some of the schools and things to make additional shelters, and that's on the list of to-dos with the upcoming penny. Make sure we have accommodations for everybody that does evacuate. We said keep changes last time, too. Okay, so this website is pretty well put together, our communications department did this, and all the information that was in that presentation plus additional information is on here. You can click each individual little icon on here, and it'll take you to a page of its own. There's also an interactive map, this is my favorite thing. So you can pan to whatever area you're looking for, or whatever type of project that you want to check out. So if we zoom in over here, oops, zoom out. We got Madeira Beach over here, and there's a little pop-up. So we're talking about doing with, or you are talking about doing with your share of the penny, undergrounding your utilities, transient dock space, public facilities and equipment upgrades. So there are all these different infrastructure projects that this city could do with their portion of it. And of course, the county will team up, sometimes with municipalities, and, and the co-funding opportunities are great, because this provides you with the percent that's your are great, because this provides you with the percent that's required by those federal grants. I'm most familiar with the FEMA ones, but it's usually like, they'll give you 50 or 75%, but the jurisdiction has to come up with the balance to do a project. So, this is a great source for that. Here's an example.
You know, there's some video in here, it'll give you some stories. We encourage you to explore this website and find out many of the things that we would like to do in the next 10 years with the penny. And with that, I'd like to open things up for any questions and comments. So, that is actually correct. In St. Petersburg, they got a pretty big race there with the, but, and that'll draw some people in, but in some of the other areas, we do, we're concerned about, you know, not having that heavy voter turnout. I'm sorry, can you, I didn't quite hear you. I believe the simple majority will pass the penny. Very good question, and one I overlooked during my presentation. We're anticipating that the penny will raise $2 billion over 10 years. It's a sizable amount of money, and it's really the main driving force behind all those capital improvement projects that are done by the county. The penny is unique to the county, but it's actually not unique. In the state of Florida, the average sales tax, the sales tax rate is 6%. Many of the municipalities, or many of the counties also have additional sales taxes, and the average for, the average sales tax in the county is 6.8%. So, with the county at 7%, including the penny, we're very much close to the statewide Put that in perspective, and really, what, I think it's an exact number, but actually, the penny for Pinellas raises more money for improvements in this county than the rest of the sales tax combined, because that money is distributed and shared, and I believe it's only about 6% comes back to us. So, when you, when you think about it, the penny is the main sales tax funding source in this county. You got the, the penny supported the municipal marina, that's been, it's a great facility, and of course, Archibald Park. And nearby here, we are, it's actually outside of the city, but just across from the Madeira Towers, there's a drainage improvement project on Cherokee Lane. In the past, there was the intent to do the undergrounding of the cables and approve things visually. Wherever you go, you see roadway improvements. Obviously, while many of us commute somewhere else, so keep in mind, our main roads, Brian Dairy is a county road, Starkey Road is a county-maintained road. So, the intersection improvements, the timing of the lights on Doomey Road, and we also do, much of the Gulf Boulevard is maintained by the county. The, yeah, there's an interlocal agreement that exists between the county and each and every of the municipalities. And basically, ILA, or interlocal agreement, says that the penny will be shared based on population. So, I mean, whatever the percentage of the population Madeira Beach accounts for, it's getting that much of the penny back, less the 11.3% set aside that is used to fund jails, courts, and some community development projects that basically serve county-wide. Yes, in deciding what to do, there were a number of customer or service, surveys completed. There were Pinellas County, we also had the penny for Pinellas, various places we set up here, and we had residents to come by and just offer input, and we surveyed them while they were there. I was proud to find out, being a drainage guy or stormwater guy, that stormwater parks and water quality was their number-one concern, but obviously, I know that everybody is always concerned about road safety and everything else.
Talk into the microphone, because people at home can't hear you.
Please do check out the website, it's got some really great information, some great videos on there that'll show you some of the examples of projects that have been done, and talk about some of the future projects that we're thinking about doing, should this go through.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right, next we have the consent agenda, and I would like to amend the consent agenda to include the resolutions that are in, further along in the packet. This was the advice of Madam Attorney. So, do I need a vote to amend that?
My suggestion would be to read the consent agenda, all five items, which I can do if you'd like, I have the titles written down. So, the consent agenda would be number one, Board of Commissioners Policy Handbook Update Code of Conduct. Number two, Support for Federal Transit Administration Grant. Number three, Resolution 2017-08, amended resolution for membership of bid committee. Number four, Resolution 2017-09, amended resolution for membership of budget committee. And number five, Resolution 2017-10, amended resolution for membership of charter commission, or charter committee. Those resolutions were just amending it to allow for more participation and less number of members, as we discussed at the previous workshops. But those are all on the consent agenda, and then I would just request if you have anyone that wants to pull anything, and then make a motion, and then take a vote.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I had a question on something. Under the bid committee, the bids that are placed on that, I'm asking the attorney, that normally is done through the city manager's office, correct?
Right, these would be bids that are out, it would go before the bid committee, and then a recommendation would go before the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so who?
The ultimate decision doesn't lie with this committee, they just make a recommendation based on the information that they receive.
But isn't that interfering in the charter with the administration part?
No, no, many municipalities around the state of Florida have bid committees to assist in recommendations, then. It allows the residents to have some more input, and it allows for a more active and engaged electorate as far as to where the city's money is being spent. So, it is just a recommendation, they're ultimately not making any decisions, but it's to kind of, it's to aid the commission and the city to accept appropriate bids.
Okay, thank you.
Are we allowing more than one member on board, or is it one board per member?
No, your charter doesn't specify, and none of the resolutions specify that if you serve on one board, you can't serve on another. So, it is possible that someone serving on one committee could serve on another committee. The only people who are not allowed to serve on committees unless otherwise specified are members of the state legislature, members of the elected officials in this city, or where otherwise prohibited employees.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Madam Mayor, I have another question here. We're talking in general, the whole handbook here, right?
I think we're just voting on the changes that we made to the handbook?
Well, I'd just like to bring something out here.
Well, it is a resolution to amend, or a resolution to adopt the guidelines in their entirety with the changes that were made at the workshop. And then, again, if you so choose, the amended, adding the public comment at the end of the meeting.
Well, I just had a question about something listed in here, in the work, in the handbook. It's under the Government Access Channel. Normally--
What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, page five. Normally, we can watch the, or the residents can watch any of the meetings that they prefer to watch at home on channel 640, correct? Okay, and that's with Bright House or Spectrum. I called them last night, and I was asking them about this, because they said that they will broadcast and re-air the meetings. They said they do not re-air it.
Right, you can't go, I've never been able to go and demand and find it, you know, you have to watch it at that time.
Right, you just have to watch it at the time that it's happening right now.
Yeah, I've never been able to find it other than that.
Okay, so as far as the re-airing of meetings, that isn't correct.
Did they say they couldn't do that?
No, they didn't. They said that they never did it. So, they will only show it on channel 640 the night of the meeting, but they will not show it again a couple days later or whenever. It's only at the night of the meeting that they do televise it on 640. So, it is not re-aired after that.
So, we can amend this and take--
Take that out?
Take that out.
Also on page 11, if I can continue? Is that all right? Okay, on page 11, where we have the regular meetings. Of course, our regular meetings are going to be at 6:00 on the second Tuesday of each month, unless the city manager determines otherwise. An agenda-setting meeting is to begin at 5:45 for the sole purpose of setting the workshop agenda for the workshops, to be held on the fourth Tuesday of the month. So far, we have not had an agenda-setting meeting, and it's really important that we have it, to set up the agenda for the workshops. So, I just wanted to point that out.
And I think we talked about that at the workshop, that we wanted to keep that in there, and we need to start doing that, you're absolutely correct.
We did, we did, but we have not had any.
You're correct.
You know, in the last six months, we have not had any, and that's important that we do have that. And also, number three, on the same page, where the workshop meetings are, the last part of it, where they talk about the straw votes. They said that it can also be taken as a consensus, but according to Robert's Rule, in a consensus, it has to be a verbal response, it cannot be a nod of the head or a raising of a hand, it has to be a, nay, yes, no. It has to be a verbal response, okay? So, I just wanted to point that out. Okay, I'm done.
So, that needs to be reworked, then, is what you're saying?
None necessary.
If I can, I'm sorry. I think what Commissioner Hodges is saying is that this commission actually needs to be doing that. Like, when we take consensus, sometimes there's a verbal vote, or a verbal yes, yes, and sometimes it's just kind of understood.
A nod of the head, whatever, it has to be verbal. It has to be verbal, yes, no, nay, or aye. Okay, I'm done now.
So, the only thing we really need to take out is the airing of--
The part where it says it re-airs the meeting, and it doesn't. It does not re-air the meeting, it's only shown the one time.
Okay. So, then the, the motion would include updating the handbook to take that word out?
Mm-hmm, that'd be good.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
interim city clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
No.
Vice Mayor Douthat?
Yes.
Mayor Blagg?
Next, we have a public hearing, and this is to consider redevelopment plan for the property located at 374 145th Avenue East. Madam Attorney?
Yes, if I could just have Louis Serna for the city to present for this hearing.
Good evening, commissioners. Louis Serna of Calvin Gier Donovan Associates presenting staff comments on this item. This is for redevelopment under Section 110-97 of your Land Development Code for property located at 374 145th Avenue East. This section of the code allows redevelopment of non-conforming properties subject to meeting other construction standards in the code, including meeting the base flood elevation standards, maximum height standards, and current building codes. Applicants do not have to meet current setback standards, because these properties are typically non-conforming as they exist. So, to encourage them to redevelop under current flood regulations and building standards, the applicant just has to demonstrate that the proposed development is at least as non-conforming or conforming to a greater degree regarding setbacks and building coverage as the existing non-conforming development. The application you have before you, we've indicated, we provided a table in there that indicates where this site and where the property does and does not meet current R2 zoning district standards. The blue text in there indicates that the property and the house as it exists does not meet current standards, and you can see on that table, the lot width is not consistent with the current standards of the zoning district, and the house does not meet the front setbacks, rear setbacks, or side setbacks. As required by code, the applicant has provided a proposed site plan demonstrating compliance and demonstrating how, compliance with the redevelopment standards, and demonstrating how the redevelopment will take place on the site. The planning commission reviewed this item, and on October 2nd, and unanimously recommended approval of this, subject to the four conditions that are included in your staff report. Staff is also recommending approval of the redevelopment plan, subject to these conditions. The staff report, I think, left off the numbering of the fourth condition, but that condition is in the report. I'll just read them briefly. The first condition is that the proposed reconstruction shall be for a single-family residence. Secondly, the proposed redevelopment shall be within the footprint and setbacks as shown on the redevelopment plan submitted with this application, and that is included in your packet. And third, the proposed redevelopment shall be consistent with the proposed development standards, as indicated in the comparison table of this report. And finally, fourth, the proposed redevelopment shall comply with the existing building codes in existence at the time of permitting for such redevelopment. Again, the recommendation of the planning commission and the recommendation of staff is for approval, subject to these four conditions.
Do you all have any questions for staff?
I have one question. This meets all FEMA requirements because of issues we've had in the past?
Yeah, absolutely, it will be required to be elevated to the base flood elevation-- It will be required to be elevated to the base flood elevation plus free board requirement.
Thank you.
And that is a good point. The house currently sits on grade, so again, to encourage a FEMA-compliant house, uh, this, that's part of the purpose of having these redevelopment requirements.
Any other questions for staff?
Can you explain to me? I'm, I'm looking at these two. I'm not sure. You say it should be, it's going to be the same-
Uh, yes. The, uh, the, the black and white survey that you have is the survey of the existing property. Uh, the blue, uh, indicates, indicates the proposed footprint. And we've quantified the, that in the table that's in the report. So, basically, for example, the front setback, currently sits at 19.41 feet. On the black survey, the blue, they're proposing 24 feet. So, uh, it is more compliant with the front setback requirements. The rear setbacks, for example, is six feet on, on the current survey. They're proposing 15 feet. So, uh, basically, they are not complying with the standards of the R2 district, but they are more compliant than the existing structure.
I was referring to actually not the setbacks, but the fact that the footprint is different than what is, what was, is current, what's proposed is different than what's currently there. Isn't it supposed to be the same footprint?
Well, it's-
I do not understand the rule.
Uh, yes, um, the way, the way that's, the way that's worded, it does say within the same footprint. But to encourage the flexibility, I think our understanding of that section is that it has to at least be as compliant with that. We, um, in fact, they are actually reducing the building coverage from the existing footprint. So, uh, rather than requiring them to build to 38.9% coverage as it exists, this allows them the flexibility to reduce it to 35% as they are proposing. So, it's not exactly the same footprint, but it is more compliant, or at least is compliant with the existing structure.
My apologies. Louis, before we can, uh, continue, I did forget to swear you in, so could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I apologize.
Thank you.
Now, if we can have the applicant? And sir, if I could swear you in, if you could please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Smith, uh, GHD Construction Services. I'm representing Dale and Dixie Cal Chauvin tonight for their new home. Um, I think Louis Serna gave a good presentation on what we're doing. We're making this thing much, much more compliant than the existing home. This house right now, all four sides, front, two sides and back, are totally non-conforming. They don't meet any of the standards of the city. Plus, it's on three-foot grade. We're going to raise it on up to probably 13-foot grade, a couple feet of free board aboard, above what we have to. So, we're taking the front from the 19-foot down to the 24-foot. The two sides are almost touching the neighbor now. They're going to conform to, I think it's five or six feet. I don't have the sheet in front of me. And then the back, right now, it's only a few feet off of the seawall. We're coming on back to the 15 feet. So, obviously, it's going to be part of the redevelopment. The plan, the city plan that was adopted, I guess, a year or two ago, was put into place exactly for this reason. Let's get rid of some of the old housing stock. Let's raise the houses and get this, get these setbacks where they're supposed to be. And that's what we're doing here. Just asking for a little bit of relief in the backyard so they can have a porch overlooking the deck. But it's not three feet off the seawall. Now, it's 15 feet off the seawall, so the neighbors have a better view.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, do we have any affected parties here this evening? If you could please come, um, state your name and be sworn in?
My name is Peter Trot. I live next door.
Could you please raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Peter Trot, and I live next door, uh, just to the east of this property. I've been there for many years, and I've been there for three or four different tenant, or owners of properties as it's changed hands. The, uh, planning board, I wasn't aware that it was sitting until I came over to get some information. And Gwen told, tells me, "Oh, that's tonight", leaving me no time to prepare anything for the planning board. What I got in the mail said today, 6 o'clock, the 10th. And so, I did have a little preparation time on that. The rear setback is the only thing that I want to address because that's the only thing that affects my property, and it affects it very much. I have a couple of items that I wanted to pass out to the, the, uh-
This is to be taken as evidence in support of the affected party status.
One of the things that was very obvious to me in the staff report is you can tell a whopper by inclusion. You can also tell it by commit, you can tell it by commission or by just not mentioning it. The classification of the back setback of this property is non-compliant. It was non-compliant when it was constructed back in the 50s. However, what my problem is, is there was a patio put on behind, 1976, the concrete patio was taken out, and a two-by-six patio put in with a cover. It had nothing to do with the property footprint. And what is going on here is they're trying to increase the rear footprint that had no visual problem with my house because it was only a few feet high to replace it with something that's several stories high. My house now sits about six feet to the back. I'm fully compliant. To add an additional six feet of several stories is going to take my sunset away completely. The fact is, all it was was not much more than a umbrella in this last storm. It ended up across the street. Took out my satellite. Damaged my roof. Ended up against my guesthouse across the street, and it's no longer there. Reasons the rear setback needs to remain as original building, and I'm referring back to the building that is, got foundations on grade, is the classification of the porch isn't much more than a driveway, a sidewalk. The rear deck is characterized as an encroachment, and it is not. It does not affect the adjoining property water view and indirectly lot dollar value. What they're proposing to do affects the lot value. It affects my view, and in fact, will totally eradicate the sunset unless I go to, out onto my dock. The reference deck is not attached to the dwelling. It's a landscape enhancement of two-by-six planks joisted and sitting on ground without any footings. It's not even attached to the building. The property appraisers document confirmed it was installed in 1996 without permit. I have copies of the appraisers. And in 1994, there was a small concrete patio there. Russ Wilson took that up, and in 1996, the appraisers show the new one going, uh, side of the building to the side of the building, 35 feet. The appraisers says, "No building permit". I was there. I saw him do it. He had his guys that worked in the moving company come in, and they didn't have anything to do with it. They installed it. And I have all the ones thereafter that show. At no point was that allowed. At no point was it permitted. It was totally illegal all the way from the original installation. It, uh, has, uh, in the packet I just gave you here, uh, there's several pictures. There's the satellite that it took out when it went over my roof. There's the hole that had to be repaired when it hit the roof. There's the view of the two-by-sixes that just sit on the ground. How can you call that an encroachment? The, uh, pieces that ended up in my, uh, guesthouse, second from the back shows how it was attached. In the back page, shows it was attached to the two-by-sixes with a two-inch lag. It wasn't even hardly connected. I guess that's why we have building standards. The, it, uh, if the requested 30-foot print enhancement is allowed, it would be clearly a windfall benefit to the applicant and a substantial detriment to the adjoining lots. There is available footprint enhancements to allow the home in the front and the sides that would not depreciate the adjoining properties. On the west side, there's plenty of room. We don't need to go back to the rear. To move the rear footprint, the water view of adjoining lots will decrease. The increase gives the applicant a privilege not afforded other properties. The rear setback would not be in harmony with the city of Bader Beach waterfront setbacks and normal appreciation that is expected by adjoining neighbors. The staff prepared the report, and I, I have it without visiting property, but they did visit the property. They, and they did take pictures. The only part to identify the landscape wood-detached deck as an encroachment was the applicant. The staff indicated they did not visit. That's wrong. It, uh, the staff did visit. I confirmed that with Louis today. He didn't give me that impression the other day. The county appraiser does not identify a landscape unattached wood deck as encroachment. It is plotted similar to a dock or other unattached items, and is so noted on the report. The applicant has not included plans, but simply a setback modification. We have no idea what he's putting up there. All I can see is a two-story wall that, uh, uh, not only currently would be six feet past where, uh, my house is, but it'd be an additional that would completely block it. The applicant's, uh, multi-story wall will block 100% of sunset visibility from the property at the east side. This would be available from my dock only. Request to vacate R2 zoning to RM. There's no residential medium. Pinellas medium as R3. R2 is low, medium. RM is residential medium. Not complying. What I, uh, what I see as a remedy to my situation is I'm not wanting them to not develop the property. I'm not wanting them to delay. When the planning board first started their hearings, the attorney said that it was a quasi-judicial hearing. I don't want to move this into some other judicial hearing that would be just further delay. I'd like to see things get going. I just don't want the applicant to pick up some $100,000 appreciation at my depreciation of my lot of some $100,000. I think when you buy a piece of property, you have the anticipation that the view is a value item. What I could see happening here is you move another several feet towards the water. Then you put a deck out beyond that. You're, pretty soon, you're right over top of my pool. And I don't think that is the intent of the redevelopment. I think the redevelopment is to get a properly constructed building on the lot the best as you can, but not at the detriment of other neighbors. What the, uh, what the, uh, uh, commission redevelopment plan indicates that you need to either approve it or approve it with amendments. What my question, or what I would ask of the commission, is that the approval not be delayed, that you go ahead and put the amendments in. But the amendment should say, the rear setback, although it is not enough, not change from what the original setback would be. Now, if I build a house and I have an eve overhang of four feet, that four-foot does not include the footing. That is not the plan. What, if I put an umbrella behind my house and put a concrete, wood, whatever, that does not improve, does not improve the footprint. What this is doing is going in the back door and saying, "Because it's not as bad as it used to be, I'll just be a little bit bad". It gets back to the point where if you're going to tell a whopper, you can do it by commission. You can do it by omission. The fact is, as I stand here today, I want to go ahead. I don't want to bring things to a stop. I don't want anything that is detrimental- I don't want anything that is detrimental to the applicant. All I want to do is to have him compliant in the rear setback, even though it doesn't make the 25 feet. It doesn't further deter my property. And what they're suggesting here is the subject property is zoned R2, low-density multifamily, and has a future land use designation of RM. There is no such thing as RM in the city of Madeira Beach. Pinellas County has an R3 that's RM, residential medium. I see many errors in the staff report. I see a back door into moving towards the water at a financial advance for the applicant. I see it blocking my view to where, from my backyard, I won't even be able to see a sunset that I can see now. What was there before did not block anything. It was low profile and had full water view. I ask that you approve it with amendment, amendments that protects the property owners on either side. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Trot, you now have the opportunity, if you so wish, to ask questions of staff or ask questions of the applicant. Would you like to do that at this time?
Yeah.
Who would you like to ask questions of?
The applicant.
It's a cross-examination, so you can ask questions of the applicant in the form of a cross-examination. So if the applicant could come up and answer the questions that Mr. Trot has.
Dale?
Of course, the applicant will be afforded the same to Mr. Trot and staff, and the staff will be afforded the same to Mr. Trot and the applicant.
This portion that you're wanting to add, how do you feel that that's some kind of an encroachment that should extend the back setback?
If you could hand in the microphone.
The reality is that we're going, this was a roofed structure, been roofed for many, many years, 20 to 40 years. I don't quite understand the number of years that he's saying, but it's been roofed. It's been there, the three or four feet off the seawall, and now we're going way back to 15 feet. Yes, the house is going to be higher. FEMA dictates that. It's good for the community, good for everything, but the house is going to be higher, but it's going to move in. It's not moving out. So he's trying to talk to the commission to make it sound like it's going to be worse. It's not. There's been a roofed structure there for many, many years while this man has lived there. And now, we're bringing that back in, and not only that, we're conforming the two sides. Right now, it's non-conforming on this man's side yard. We're bringing that in, we're bringing the front in, the other side in, all non-conforming, and we're actually bringing the back in from the three feet to the 15 feet.
Commission or omission. The fact is, I can tell you-
Sir, are you have a question to ask?
Yeah.
You just need to ask questions at this point.
Oh, okay.
You had your opportunity to speak at this point, it's just time to ask questions.
No more questions then.
Sir, does the applicant have any questions for staff or for Mr. Trot?
No more questions.
Okay. Staff, do you have any questions for Mr. Trot or for the applicant?
Uh, no questions.
Okay. At this time, staff can give its final presentation if it has a rebuttal, if it would like.
It appears that the portion of the existing structure in question is the covered porch, and whether or not that was legally permitted, based on our research, that was apparently there or added in 1996. We have no records of permits, but that's not surprising going back to 96 and actually more frequently. So it's very common for us not to have those records. But there has not been any code enforcement action on this property that would indicate that that is a non-conforming structure. So we are presuming that it is, it was erected legally. There was a variance that was granted on this site in 2013, and at that time, that was the same conclusion of staff at the time that that overhang was permitted legally. And again, we can't base our findings on the property appraisers' records because they may not have recorded the issuance of this permit. So based on our research, we have to, our determination is that structure was legal, so the setbacks are indeed what they are. They are legally non-conforming, but legally, so.
Is there any rebuttal from the applicant or a final conclusion from the applicant? From the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir. If you could state your name, it'd be sworn in for the record.
Dale Calchovan.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
In 1951, the house was built. At that time, it was constructed with a 10 by 20 back porch.
Talk into the microphone, please.
A big burn?
Talk into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. At the time, it was constructed in 1951. It was done so, I have a photograph of it, antique photograph, but with a back porch that was 10 by 20 on concrete. You can somewhat see it on, if you want to pass it down this, let's see if I've got some other stuff. In 1980, there's a city appraisal indicating the back porch being there, the 10 by 20. I wasn't planning to do this, I'm sorry. I believe this is a 1981. No, this is a 1996 city appraisal of the property.
And sir, is there any possibility that we could make copies of those for the-
Yes, ma'am.
We won't do it now, but after the meeting.
Sure. Okay. There was a wood deck that was added over the concrete deck, placed on top of it. There were foundation posts put in for supporting the porch. The, in 213, as was mentioned, I requested to change it, remove it, put a new one up, coming more into compliance, and it was granted at that time. It was taken to district court, which reconfirmed it in the fall of '14. But I was a little frustrated, discouraged, and so I didn't follow through. But I'm 67 now, and I was hoping to build and retire on the property. I'll try and find the copy of the 1980, which I've got somewhere in this pile of papers, for y'all to have the appraisal at that time. Any questions or?
That's going to be your final statement, and then, of course, Mr. Trot, you get a final statement as well. So now you have the opportunity to give a final statement.
In the appraisers' reports, they do have a spot that shows the permit data, and it is on every one of them, all the way through, and they are correct. And Dale was correct in the fact that there was a concrete pad behind, there was a driveway. Driveway's not part of the footprint. If you have a concrete pad behind your house, that's not part of the footprint. What we have here is an increase of the footprint, not from 1991 or 81, 51. The house hasn't moved. There's been the dock put up, more concrete poured, driveways, whatever. None of it is part of the footprint. Now, the applicant says demolish and replace on the footprint. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with increasing, decreasing frontage, sides. I've lived with them too close on one side for a long, long time. Hasn't bothered me a bit. I do have a problem when you try to include improvements, landscape, driveways, docks, and in fact, this porch that ended up in recent Irma, coming over top of my house and ended up in my guest house across the street. I don't want anything except what I have. I don't want to give up what I have. The footprint does not meet back setbacks the way it is, but it's been there since '51, and it should stay as is. To add 240 feet on one, two, or three levels to a house, it's got to be worth $100 a foot to give that advantage in a redevelopment at the detriment of a similar amount of money to the value of my land, my lot, my house of many, many years. I want you to approve redevelopment. I just want it amended on the rear setback to the original and unchanged setback that in fact is not enough for code, but it is what it is, and I can live with that. Thank you for your time.
At this time, the commission can close the public hearing and can go. At a quasi judicial hearing, there is no, well, let me leave this to the commission. Quasi judicial hearings do not require public comment. The reason for that is the comments from the public are not considered evidence and are not to be considered weighed for this commission's decision. So it is up to the commission, if you would like, the opportunity for the public to speak, but I would just advise that anything that's said is not to be considered in making your decision this evening. So Madam Mayor, I'll leave that up to you.
Well, in previous hearings like this, the public was not allowed to speak.
And legally, and, excuse me, excuse me.
Excuse me, yeah.
Have you-
I've been, I've been to quasi judicial hearings, and the public had the right to speak all the time.
It, have, excuse me, point of order. If you have not asked for affected party status, then prior to the hearing this evening, then you do not have the opportunity to speak unless this commission wishes to give the public an opportunity to speak. However, during a quasi judicial hearing, whether or not it's been done before or not, legally speaking, public comment is not required. So it is not evidence, it is not to be considered when weighing your decision. So it is up to this, to the mayor, to this commission, if they want to hear public comment or not. It is not required under the law.
As I was saying, in the previous experience, the public has not been allowed. I'm surprised that you're saying, excuse me, let me finish. I'm surprised that you're saying that now. But on the other hand, if we're not allowed to listen and take your comments into account, what's the, I don't understand the point.
No, well, and that's why the public comment is not required, because it's not considered evidence. The parties and the affected parties-
I mean, I would love to hear what you have to say, but I can't change my mind by what you're going to tell me.
At the beginning of, at the beginning of quasi judicial, she was supposed to say, all affected parties, please stand, raise your right hand to get sworn in now.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I've been to a lot of quasi judicial. I was on the commission when we put it into-
Effective parties-
You weren't here, and neither of you two were there.
Effective parties, I understand, need to apply ahead of time.
Am I being thrown out of the meeting, Mayor?
The deputy-
Am I being thrown out of the meeting?
I'm not throwing you out of the meeting. It's up to the deputy. I know, but that's, it's a, I don't like it any more than you. I really disliked it when they were doing it before, but those are the rules, and I can't change the rules.
You said you could be allowed to the-
I know, but I can't, I can't affect my, all right, go ahead and speak.
Ma'am, if you can, if you can, excuse me, if you can demonstrate that you are an affected party, a party, and that you should get affected party status by testifying, I can swear you in, you can testify just as to if you are an affected party and how you are an affected party, then I will let you participate. Ma'am, could you, I need you to be sworn in, because this is going to be considered testimony. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I think there's just a switch on this.
Okay. I own the lot to the west of him, and then the next lot over also. Those are both my properties, so I am very affected by this. And I have absolutely no problem with what they're doing, because I've been living on my property since 1985. The house next door to me, or between us, between Mr. Trot's house and mine, has had a porch as long as I can remember. We go by there in our, first in our sailboat, and then in our powerboat. I'd like you guys to really look at how that peninsula sits. It's very much like a cul-de-sac. All of the lots are narrow, at the curve, are narrower in the front and wider in the back. So even my little lot, it's like their little lot, has a panoramic view. I can see all the way out, from out in the backyard, I can see all the way from where the little canal runs down towards the back of the Daiquiri shack, all the way to the Veterans Hospital and a little further. So I can see that whole lagoon, the bridge, everything. The one thing I can't see from the house, now, this is Mr. Trot's house facing kind of northeast. Mr. Daisy and Dale's house faces north, and it's a pie-shaped lot. My next lot is a pie-shaped lot also. It faces north and a little bit east, north and a little bit west. And then my other lot faces mostly northwest. From the lot next to Daisy and Dale's, I cannot see the sunset from inside that house. That house is way further west than Mr. Trot's. Mr. Trot has to go out in his backyard to see the sunset right now. That's a big issue. I mean, to really see the sunset completely from the house next to Daisy and Dale's, you have to go out in the dock, and there's no house in the way of seeing it from that house. The other issue is, I would really like to see property values increase in Madeira Beach. I plan on being here for a very long time. I've already been here over 30 years, 30, 85, 32 years. And I don't think property values are ever going to increase at the rate that other beaches are increasing unless we allow improvement, unless we allow people to come in and build beautiful homes, bigger homes, more up-to-date homes, homes that aren't going to be destroyed in a hurricane. Property is going to languish in this neighborhood. Madeira Beach has always lagged a little behind, and I live here, I love Madeira Beach, but I'm a builder and I also am a realtor, and I know that the property values have always languished a little behind St. Pete Beach, a little behind Treasure Island, a little behind some of the other, like Clearwater Beach. little behind some of the other, like Clearwater Beach. And a lot of that is because there's been very little redevelopment. Just in the last five years, all of a sudden, since the recession kind of waned, there's been a lot, been a surge of redevelopment, and property values are starting to really increase in the neighborhood. And without that, the neighborhood's going to stagnate. So I really feel this is an important thing to do. I know that fortune question has been there since at least 85. So I don't know if it was there in 82 or not, but I, my own houses are real close to the seawall also, and none of them block the view from inside the house of each other because of, by virtue of being on pie-shaped lots. We have a lot of view, and it's very open water view, it's very beautiful. And I just, I saw the design that they want to do of the house, and I think it's very, you know, conforming to what is happening in Madeira Beach right now on other waterfront properties. So I have, I'm all for it. I think it's going to be wonderful, and I hope you guys will approve it. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for staff or the applicant?
No.
Does staff or the applicant have any questions for this affected party? Let's let, if there are any, since we've allowed one, if there are any other affected parties and you can demonstrate that you're an affected party, and then we will do a round of short closing statements. Yes, sir, if you could please come up and state your name to be sworn, and then demonstrate how you are an affected party, please.
Steve Kochik, 15301. Steve Kochik, 15301, Second Street East, Madeira Beach, Florida.
And raise your right hand, please, sir. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And how are you an affected party, sir?
I live in Madeira Beach also. I live on the water.
Are you an adjoining neighbor?
I'm not an adjoining neighbor.
Did you receive a postcard when the applicant-
No, I did not.
Okay. I am sorry, sir, but just because you live in the community and you happen to be on a waterfront property as well does not make you an affected party with this quasi judicial hearing. Unless you can demonstrate some other reason that you're an affected party, you do not have the opportunity to speak.
The statement that I make is, the statement that I'm going to make, I think, has to do with the validity of this hearing. I have just one question. Why isn't this a variance hearing?
Sir, this is because this is for redevelopment. This is not a variance from the codes. So I appreciate your comment, and I've entertained your question, which is against my better judgment, but you are not affected party this evening.
This is how it's going to start.
Would the applicant like to make a final brief statement? And then staff will be able to make a brief statement, and then we will close the public portion of the hearing.
I should have said this before. Mr. Trot is going to like this. The house is going from three feet back to 15 feet, but what, and you have to count the roof, that's a setback goes from the roof. The back 10 feet of this house is wide-open porch on all floors. He'll be able to look through, if he's worried about his view, and see a better view than he ever saw with the roof that was up there before. So there's 10 feet on the different floors, completely open. This is not a wall going back to the 15 feet. He's going to be by far bettered than, enhanced for his view than what he had before. So everything is better for him, better for the community, raising the house up and all. So we do ask for your approval, please.
Would staff like to make a brief, final comment?
Just briefly, staff does stand behind our findings. It's very difficult to demonstrate something that old does have, or does not have a permit, but based on the information we have, we feel that our findings are valid. Typically, we find out about noncompliant development through code enforcement action, and there are no records in this case.
Okay. At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and give, hand it over, obviously, to the commission to make a decision. I would just reiterate before we get started that you are sitting in a quasi judicial capacity, so you are sitting, basically, you are bound by the criteria in your code. You're only to consider evidence that is relevant, competent, and substantial, that is applicable to the code criteria. The code criteria is listed in your staff report under review criteria, and at this point, you know, the commission can discuss and make a motion to approve or disapprove with conditions or without conditions. I would just state that if there's a motion, just to make sure that you reiterate the conditions or not with conditions, and specifically list them as they're in the staff report, if you wish to have those conditions.
I have a question. Can I ask them a question?
I mean, we've already closed the public portion hearing, and you have the opportunity to ask questions. You certainly can. I don't have a problem with that, just understanding that it's not going to be a discussion between the applicants and-
Understood. Louis, it's for you, basically. Looking in here in the required for rear setback, it says 25 feet, and this is proposed at 15 feet. I guess my question is, I don't understand if we have these required things, why, you know, why aren't we sticking to them, or why aren't we, you know, what's changing, I guess, or do we need to change the rules and the codes? I understand before it was six feet, but still, at 15 feet, the required says 25 feet. So I guess, I'm asking, I don't understand.
Yeah, and the required is basically required under R2, and we're dealing with a substandard lot in this case, and there's a lot out there in Madeira Beach that don't meet the standards of their current zoning district. So in this case, to encourage redevelopment, we allow this process to simply allow the applicant to build something better than exists currently as far as setbacks. It doesn't comply with the 25 feet as it exists, so as long as he's going better than the six feet in this case, then it complies with the redevelopment standards of the code.
So is this something that we need to look at changing in the future, that it's not 25 feet, if you're saying, you know, any new development or redoing of houses or whatever, it's not going to work on these properties?
Well, I can clarify maybe a little bit. The way that the code is written, this is an application for redevelopment. The reason that this is, that this is a part of your code is to allow for those homes that were built prior to these, the new setback requirements being adopted in your code. So new, if you were to build a brand-new home on a brand-new lot, should one exist, you would have to meet the requirements in the code. These homes were built prior to those setbacks being implemented. So in order to encourage redevelopment in the community, this process is allowing for homeowners to come in, or property owners to come in, and redevelop that property in the same footprint or better. So not to encroach in the existing setbacks, or not have to require them to conform to the setbacks, but saying that we'll allow you to rebuild so that we can redevelop these properties. You can't make it any worse than it already is, but you can make it better. So that's kind of where this comes in.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question for you. What is the actual setback from the seawall to the house, not including the porch? What is that distance?
Okay, with the porch, we've indicated six feet. If you took, if you excluded the porch, we calculated it'd be about 19 feet. Still wouldn't make the 25 feet. Oh, is it, that was just based on my calculation, based on the survey. If you cut off that, which I think is about 13 feet of porch, but yeah, that's just my estimate.
So you're actually including the deck as being part of the house? And when you look at, if you look at, like, take my house, somebody years ago built a room on the back of it and filled my porch in. The house next door has exactly the same house without that porch. And when you look at the property proprietor's office, it goes by living space, square foot. So his is obviously smaller than mine. So I don't know why you're, I mean, I could see it if it was closed in, had been closed in for years, but you're just talking about an open porch here, right?
Well, it is roofed over, but yeah, that is technically the structure. And if they were doing an addition today, they could not add that under the current zoning because of-
But if you're building, you're saying if you're building a new structure, then you can include it in the livable space.
Well, you can count it, say, if the house were there without the covered porch, and they wanted to cover it, they could not, because it wouldn't meet the 25-foot setback, because they are adding structural area. You know, presuming that it was built legally, then we are counting that as part of the structure. It's not living, not enclosed, heated and cooled living area, but it is part of the structure and part of the footprint.
Any more discussion? Where do we, what's the next step, then?
You would make, if somebody would need to make a motion to either approve, deny, approve with conditions.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Are you approving it in its totality, without the conditions designated by staff?
Yes.
Yes.
Any more discussion?
No, but I just want to tell Pete, the reason that I'm doing this is because the setback that the gentleman's building is absolutely further back than what this original one-story building was. And for me to get a house off of grade, off of grade is a wonderful thing in Madeira Beach. We need to build these houses up so that they can be FEMA compliant. You're going to have a better view, I think, Pete. I'm done. I'm done.
Interim City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oakley?
No.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
All right, next we have the ordinance 2017-09, a first reading, repealing and replacing Division 14, Section 110-940, Medical Marijuana Dispensaries. Madam Attorney.
Ordinance number 2017-09, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, repealing and replacing Division 14, Section 110-940, Medical Marijuana Dispensaries of the Code of the Ordinances, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach, providing for the prohibition of the, prohibition of the siting of Medical Marijuana Treatment Center dispensing facilities within the incorporated limits of the City of Madeira Beach, providing for legislative intent, finding the amendments consistent with the city comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing for the recognition of state preemption, and providing for an effective date, read by title only. And just by way of presentation, this is something that we previously discussed. It was brought forward by Vice Mayor Dalther with regards to banning medical marijuana dispensaries within the city limits, and this ordinance does just that. At this time, it would ban all medical marijuana dispensaries from being allowed within Madeira Beach's city limits, and I can answer any questions you might have.
All right, can we have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance number 2017-09.
I'll second that.
Interim City Clerk, please call the roll.
At this point, we need public comment.
Oh, right to that. All right, do we have any public comment on this item? Yes.
Steve Kochik, 15301, Second Street East, Madeira Beach. With all the years that have gone by, I saw that you used a white paper from California Chief of Police as one of the reasons why you're choosing to disallow medical marijuana dispensaries. Going to that resource, they have that, this resource document's been archived, and they contain content that is out of date. What that means is this, this white paper was the same as watching Reefer Madness. We have come a long way. You've got people there that are hurting, that are really hurting. Whether it opens here or it opens down the street, it doesn't matter. At least have a reason, come and tell us why you believe that this is going to happen. Because if you say you're worried about drug people, let's take a look at all the bars and alcohol that you've allowed to go on. How many deaths have come from that? How many people's faces got licked because of that? Is this any time to separate something that is medicinal and helping people with something that you allow freely that really does a lot of harm to people? That's all I would want to know. Give me a reason why you don't think that this is good for the community. That's a fact and not hearsay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
No.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to ask for some assistance from Madam Attorney. Now we're going to be discussing the applicants for the commissions and the committees.
The next items, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, are appointments to the various committees and the commissions within the City of Madeira Beach. The items 2, 3, and 4 are new committees that were created by passage of resolution. There have been a number of applicants for each committee, specifically for item number 2, which is the item which we will address individually next. The bid committee, there were several applicants. You have their applications within your packet. The commission will need to review, or should have already reviewed the applications, and determine who they would like to appoint as the five regular members of the committee and the two alternate members of the committee. I believe there were eight applications, so it's a seven-member committee. I believe that there are tabulation sheets in front of you that you should indicate who for number 2 you would like to select for that committee of five regular members to alternate, and we will just discuss that one now, and then we'll move on to the next one. So we'll discuss the bid committee, the applicants, you can discuss amongst yourselves. If you have any questions, and the applicants are here, you can certainly ask of them. And then I would just suggest that you indicate your tabulations. Andrea can add them up, and then tell the mayor what the, tell the commission who the majority is, and that just is to give you an idea. But ultimately, you'll need to, someone will need to make a motion to appoint five individual regular members and then two alternates, and I would do that by name. So not individual motions, but one motion saying I appoint 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 as regular members, item number 2, and, you know, the other two as alternate members, and then it can be seconded, discussed, amended as needed. So this will be a fairly complicated process, just because this is a brand-new committee. Three of them are brand-new committees, but this is the process for which the mayor has decided that is the simplest to go about doing this. So certainly, you can ask any questions and discuss amongst yourselves.
City Attorney?
Yes.
I just want to kind of say, Andrea just passed a sheet of paper out. This is something that I did. Basically, you can see if, it says already, that means they're already on a committee. Okay? Next one, if it's an X in there, that's people who only put in for one position and one position only. Okay? And then every place, there's a line, dotted line, that means nobody, or they did not want to be considered for that particular committee, such as if you look at the very first lady over at Civil Service and Planning Committee, she did not want to be considered, so I have black lines. So when we consider, you know, voting or picking people, we need to eliminate the ones that they don't want to be on those committees. So versus the other sheet that was handed out, I just think this gives us more of where people are at, what they want to be considered for and what they don't want to be considered for. I also think where I put the X is, that's people who only indicated one board, and we've got enough openings that I think those people need to be considered for those boards, definitely, when we look at who we're voting for. And then, like I said, probably a lot of people are going to end up with on a couple committees, plus being an alternate. So that, I don't know, this made it easier for me to kind of figure out, so I hope it helps you.
Need to ask you one question on this here.
Yes.
Now, we're just going to go ahead and just put like an X next to the names, or how did you?
That's how it's been explained to me, that next to whomever's name that you're wishing you would like to add them to that committee, I would just maybe put an R for regular member and A for alternate. That way, we have an idea.
Mr. Attorney?
Need to ask you one question on this here.
Yes.
Now, when we're just gonna go ahead and just put like an X next to the names, or how did you?
That's how it's been explained to me, that next to whomever's name that you're wishing you would like to add them to that committee. I would just maybe put an R for regular member and A for alternate. That way, we have an idea.
George Mons, Jerry Clyt, Jim Everett, Pam Rasmussen, and John Hendrix. The most for the alternates were Doreen Moore, Michael Wykoff, and Paul Teeka.
This is for the bid committee. So just to reiterate, based on your tabulations for regular members in ranking order, there were the most votes for George Mons, Jerry Clyt, Jim Everett, Pam Rasmussen, and John Hendrix. And then the order, ranking order for the alternates would be Doreen Moore, Paul Teeka, and then Michael Wykoff. So then the commission just needs to make a motion, either approving the, you just need to make a motion including the names of the people that you want to approve for the five regular members and the two alternate members.
So we need to remove one of the alternate members, correct?
You don't need to remove anyone. The information that Andrea just gave you is just a ranking order based on what you all have tabulated. What needs to happen next is that somebody on the commission needs to make a motion, and it doesn't have to be in the ranking order that was put there. I would suggest it likely will be. But just to make a motion saying I move that we appoint this person, this person, this person, this person, and this person as regular members of the big committee, and this person, this person as alternate members of the big committee.
I'll make a motion that we appoint George Mons, Jerry Clyt, Jim Everett, John Hendrix, and Pam Rasmussen as members, and Doreen Moore and Paul Teeka as alternates.
Second.
Interim City Clerk, please call the roll.
Well, we would need discussion and then?
Some discussion and then?
And public comment.
All right, any discussion? Public comment?
Steve Kotick, 15301, Second Street East. First, congratulations on the people that put their names in and are willing to spend some time to help the community. I wasn't here, so it might have been, but this, this committee, how long is it going to be in effect? How often will they meet? And the idea of the bids, I wasn't clear when you explained it a little bit before. Will they be sitting in on RFPs and these, opening of the sealed bids?
I'm personally, I'm not real familiar with how the bidding committee?
So you're making a committee with no, no idea of how it's gonna run yet?
Well, I'm assuming they're gonna come up with their rules, but it's to review the bids.
If, oh, so just to review the bids. For what purpose?
They're an advisory board.
What purpose?
They will be, they will be an advisory board to the city.
To tell you whether or not the bid is good or not?
They're of an advisory nature.
We're not gonna, okay, so a bid comes in, you open it up, there are three, three bids were put in, let's say five bids were put in. You open it up, you go through your normal process that you've gone through for years. Then what does the committee do?
As he said, it's an advisory committee. They will be looking into the bids and giving us their advice. We can take it or not take it.
But normally, you wouldn't accept the bid anyway. It would come, the city manager would be accepting the bid. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
So what, what, who are they advising then?
This is a way for the public to get involved with the city and to have a say. So this is a way for that to happen.
But doesn't the city charter say that they're not allowed to interfere with the, wow, we're gonna have a good time with you today, huh?
The city charter not allowed the public to interfere with city business?
That's correct. The city, to interfere with the city manager and his running of the city.
There's nothing in your charter that specifically says that the city, that the public can't advise or talk to or interfere in the, in public business.
As you interpret the city charter.
If you'd like to provide me with the provision that you're specifically referencing the charter, I can certainly get you an opinion on that.
Okay, thank you, I will.
Of course.
Thank you very much. Again, congratulations to all the people that volunteered. Again, congratulations to all the people that volunteered.
Anyone else? Interim City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, if you'd call the next item on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Continue while she's tabulating, is that what you're telling me?
Right, well, we just need to make an announcement of the next item of the agenda, and she can tabulate.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, then, is the participant agreement for disaster debris collection.
No, 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 no.
No, Madam Mayor, we're on number three.
The Budget Committee. The Budget Committee.
Oh, I thought we were, I'm sorry, I thought you may be going to skip over that and come back to it, okay. The next one is the Budget Committee, then. So now, we need tabulation from the city clerk.
No. Don't you read the resolution?
Oh, okay, gotcha. So next, we have the resolution, 2017 dash or not?
No, we don't have to read the resolution. That's already been accepted on the consensus table.
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be...
No, it's okay, we're, we just, we've already made a motion and approved the members for appointment to the bid committee. So now, we just need to announce the next item on the agenda, which you've done, which is applications for the Budget Committee. And then, we are just waiting on Madam Clerk to finish the tabulations, and then we can move on from there.
For the Budget Committee, the most votes for members are Debbie Weinstein, Marvin Merrill, Tom Edwards, Jim Everett. And I have a tie that has three, so I don't know what to do.
Who are the three tied members?
The two that tied with three is June Mons and John Hendrix.
So they would be tied for the fifth ranking spot, okay.
Yes.
And then, the alternates?
The alternates would be Doreen Moore, Michael Wykoff, Jim Everett. Oh, did I? I'm sorry. Sorry.
Well, and then, I would just say that the other two, the tie for regular members between John Hendrix and June Mons, I would say that that's probably your first alternate ranking. Whomever you don't choose to fit as the fifth member would likely be your first alternate ranking. And then, Ms. Moore would be the second alternate ranking, and Mr. Wykoff would be the third. And then, at this time, we would just need a motion.
I make a motion that we select Debbie Weinstein, Marvin Merrill, Tom Edwards, Jim Everett, and June Mons, with alternates of John Hendrix, Doreen Moore, and Michael Wykoff, I'm sorry.
Well, that was, that's more than seven members. Okay.
Yeah.
So the motion is to select Debbie Weinstein, Marvin Merrill, Tom Edwards, Jim Everett, and June Mons as the five regular members, with John Hendrix and Doreen Moore as the two alternates.
I'll second.
Any comments from the commission? Comments from the public? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
No.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
The next agenda item was applications for Charter Committee.
Applicants for the most votes for members for the Charter Committee are Sam Baker, Paul Teeka, June Mons, Jerry Clyte, and Doreen Moore. The most alternate votes are Michael Wykoff and John Hendrix, and Jim Everett. Yes, sorry.
So he would, it would be one, two, and then three?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we select the following individuals as members of the Charter Committee: Sam Baker, June Mons, John, um, Paul Teeka, Doreen Moore, and Jerry Clyte, with alternates of Michael Wykoff and John Hendrix.
I'll second.
Any comments from the commission? Any comments from the public? Interim City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
No.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next, we have the applicants for the Civil Service Commission. This should go faster, we only have two.
Yeah. Okay. All right. There's two applicants, but there's one vacancy.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
And in all honesty, the tabulations are probably not necessary on these two. Someone could just make a motion, and then the votes will flush out who's approved or who's not.
That's true.
I have a tie between Paul Teeka and John Hendrix.
Which would be really difficult, because there's five commissioners. So I would just suggest that a commissioner make a motion for which of the two they'd like to appoint. Which of the two you'd like to appoint to fill the one vacancy? There's two applicants, am I correct?
Erica? Can we hold on just one second?
Of course.
Wouldn't we only appoint one?
Correct. What I was saying is, we don't really need the tabulations. There are two applicants for one vacancy, so the tabulations aren't required. I would just suggest that a commissioner make a motion.
So I make a motion to appoint John Hendrix.
Second.
Any discussion?
How can there be a tie?
That, that's why I was saying, we don't need the tabulation on this one, because there are only, there are only two applicants for one position.
Any discussion? Any comments from the audience? Interim City Clerk?
Commissioner Oakley?
No.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Could you please repeat the... It was John, who was the other one?
It's just John Hendrix to fill the position.
Paul Teeka.
Okay. No. All right, next, we have the Planning Committee.
The same is true for this one. There's one vacancy, but there are two applicants, so I would just suggest that a commissioner make a motion.
I make a motion that we elect Marilyn Rappa.
I'll second.
All right, and any commission discussion? Anyone in the audience have a comment? Interim City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Thank you, Interim City Clerk, that was well done.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have the participant agreement for disaster debris collection and removal services. Mr. Marisakano.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor and commission, this is the agreement that is a procurement agreement. You will no longer hear piggyback language in the county. This is, goes along with our FEMA guidelines and the process that we have to follow in order to be reimbursed by FEMA. So this has already been agreed upon and signed by the city manager, acting city manager, and it is before you today, the county wanted all commissions to be aware of it and see it. There's nothing for us to sign or vote on, but we've done all the proper paperwork to make sure that we're reimbursed by FEMA for the debris cleanup. That, I'm happy to say, our city is done.
Great, excellent, thank you. So there's no vote on this, then?
No, ma'am, there's not a vote, but a...
I think we need to wait for Madam Attorney for the next item. But meanwhile, it's Resolution 2017-11, supporting home rule. Home rule gives us power at a local level, and the legislature right now is trying to take that power away from us, so this is what we're voting on. Madam Mayor? I mean, Madam Attorney.
I'm okay, I don't necessarily need that promotion, thank you.
We're on the home rule.
A Resolution 2017-11, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, supporting home rule powers and providing for an effective date hereof, read by title only. And I can answer any questions y'all have.
I make a motion we pass Resolution 2017-11.
Second.
Any discussion on the commission?
We've been losing this battle in Tallahassee for the last 15 years. They're taking a lot of unfunded mandates, and they're throwing them back down to the cities to have to deal with. And we send up Kathleen Peters, we send up people who have started at the, at this level, and it's great. But I tell you, there's guys that go up there who are just, and I'm not going to mention names, but, but there's guys that go up there who have no, no clue what happens at this level. You know, they're, they're not on boots on the ground. So we do need to support our representatives and our senators who put home rule in the, in the forefront of their campaigns. So, that being said, thank you.
Any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Interim City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
All right, next, we have the applications for the city clerk, acting city manager.
Yes, ma'am. You've had and reviewed the two applicants that we have for the city clerk's position. Just want to know what your pleasure is.
Okay, I'll start then. I interviewed Clara Van Laergen, and I found her to be very friendly. I think she'd be a good asset to the city here. She, first thing she said to me when I walked in to meet her was that, "I just love this city." She said that my husband and I came down, and we went through the whole complex here, and we looked in all the windows, just checked everything out, and she was so excited, had a good attitude, and I really feel like she would be a good fit.
She also has a masters in...
Yes, she does.
In certification, which pushed her over the top, too. And she seems variable, very knowledgeable about things that go on in the city and certain processes and procedures of, I liked her, too.
Do we have a motion or any more discussion?
Are any of the applicants here?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
And I would suggest that the motion be to, like we did before with the other clerk, to allow the city manager to make an offer to your selection, and then we will appoint them after they begin employment with the city.
I make a motion to offer Clara B. Van Blargen an opportunity to be City Clerk here in Madeira Beach.
Second. Any comments from the Commission? General public? Interim City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
No.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
All right, finally, well, not finally, next, we have appointing the new city manager. We have a revised contract, I believe, Madam Attorney.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've spoken with Chief, there were a couple of revisions. I know we had spoken before, Madam Mayor, and one of the sections that you discussed, which would have been the probationary period, Chief has elected to remove that, so that will not be part of the contract. I know we went back and forth, but he does not want that in there at all. The other revision that was made, her chief had to do with sick pay. The contract, as presented last time, had 25% of any and all accrued sick leave to be paid and available at termination. Chief has asked that both the clause for termination and for, I believe...
Correct.
Correct. Will be, no, just the clause for termination will be up from 25% to 100% of a payout for sick leave. And that was the only other change that was made from the last time we spoke.
Okay.
When would this contract go into effect?
It would go into effect as soon as he is appointed, so we would have that executed. If he were to be appointed this evening, we would have it executed this evening.
So if this contract is effectively put in order, that he's going to start his $125,000 salary today?
We could make it effective for tomorrow, but the way that the contract reads, and I can amend that for tomorrow's for execution, the way that the contract presently stands is that, you know, we'll just input that it entered into tomorrow or the first day of the pay period, if I understand that it's Monday to make things easier. It's whatever the pleasure of the Commission will be his official start date, but he will be effectively appointed City Manager at this meeting for a future date.
So up to this time, he's been getting Chief's salary?
Correct, because he hasn't been, he's been Acting City Manager.
And Chief, you know how I feel, we've had this discussion before, it's not the first time. You know, $125,000 is overpaying you, and not only that, you want $135,000 automatic in six months, so, you know, it's just, if you want to write a contract in your favor, this is it, that's for sure.
Well, thank you, and I'd also like to ask that it be made retroactive after this contract is approved.
And I, just to advise the city, I would suggest that that not be done.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept this contract.
The motion should be to, if you were looking to appoint, to appoint him as the City Manager with the terms, provided with the terms of this contract.
Okay. Appoint me to City Manager with the terms of the contract.
Would you like it to be effective tomorrow?
Effective first day of the pay period.
Effective the first day of the pay period.
I second. Any comments from the Commission?
Fire Chief, you know how I felt about this with our first conversation, and I really do respect you as the Fire Chief, and I'd like to see you stay as the Fire Chief.
Any other comments? Yes, public comment is next.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore. You're talking $125,000, that's the base pay. When you add in his, the differences in his benefits, it's $145,000, not $125,000. So that's what you're looking at, and that's an awful lot to pay. We asked that question last, and nobody had the answer, but that's it with benefits. It's too much.
Anyone else? Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Ann Rasmussen, 567 Normandy Road. As a schoolteacher, I'm in the state pension, and I realize that the chief also is. His last five years of service in the state is based on, or his retirement is based on his last five years, so increasing his pay, of course, will increase his retirement substantially. So it's a no-brainer on his side, or in his case, for him to take this huge pay raise.
Good evening. My name is Doug Andrews, I live at 9141st Avenue here in Madeira Beach. Tonight's a big decision for you guys as a commission. Managing people isn't easy. Being a city manager is really hard, okay? Not only managing people, but you also serve as the CEO and the face of our city. So if I was sitting in your chair tonight, there were some questions I'd want to know. I'd want to know, why would a city manager and a treasurer with a hurricane approach and be spending valuable time writing the attached letter that I just gave to you, the beach beacon, trying to discredit a story about the rec center accomplishments? If I were sitting in your chair tonight, I'd want to know why there was no communication coming from the city manager's office prior to a Cat 5 hurricane bearing down on Madeira Beach. I'd want to know why we spent taxpayer money on champagne and pizza on an Irma celebration while there are still businesses down and residents still without power. If I was sitting in your chair, I'd want to know why we're giving absolute power to a person that has no track record of managing civilians. I'd want to know why a director with an impeccable personnel file was terminated without being given any warning, probation, or corrective action plan, or why he was given no severance package. If I were sitting in your chair tonight, I'd want to know why the CEO and face of my city goes storming into a recreation center full of children on two occasions, half-cocked, yelling and ranting and raving. If I were sitting in your chair tonight, I'd want to know why, if there was any merit to the allegations of him creating a hostile work environment at the firehouse. If I were sitting in your chair tonight, if we had done a complete background check on our potential new CEO, if I were sitting in your chair tonight, I'd want to know why he lied on his resume, saying that he'd been employed with the city since 2001. If I were sitting in your chair tonight, I'd wonder why the Acting City Manager told this commission that I fired his current assistant because she was pregnant when she was working at the rec, when a two-minute walk down to HR would show you Lacy's severance agreement. It's in your packet right there in front of you. If I were in your chair tonight, I'd want to know why. Why'd the city treasurer resign last week, then rescind it, and it's been kept hush-hush to everybody since? Okay? I'd want to know why, if given his recent health issues, if Darrell's even capable of being a city manager, or if the stress is too much for the man already. You guys have a very, very big decision tonight. It's, I think the one thing that's really clear is there are a lot of unanswered questions about his experience, his personal background, his crisis management ability, his integrity, his health, and the recent human resource decisions he's made. With great power comes great responsibility. Based on my professional experience with the man, the job is way too big for him and he's not up to the task. You all ran on the premise of transparency. If you can't answer the questions that I've just asked you, you cannot in good faith elevate this man to be the CEO and face of this great city. Thank you very much.
My name is Debbie Weinstein, 441 129th Avenue. I've been a resident and a property owner here for over 40 years. I have worked very well with Darrell as the Fire Chief and as the Acting City Manager. I think that he has been an excellent representative for all the citizens of Madeira Beach, for the elected officials. I think that he has also been an excellent conduit for the employees in many, many crisis situations. I really think that you are doing the city an injustice if you do not have Darrell be the next city manager.
Any more public comment?
Can you hear me? Okay. Morgan Domeng, I'm at 548 Lilian Drive, and I'm not a very good public speaker, I'm not very competent up here, but Chief, you were wonderful. My house caught on fire. Your team, you responded, it was absolutely an amazing experience. I was bringing my homes, or my son home from a surgery. We came to a home that was on fire, you responded with your team, took care of us, gave us all the information we needed, and it was a wonderful experience. I think that's what you're very good at, and I appreciate that. Again, speaking to my son, the recent actions of firing Doug Andrews as the Recreation Director has a direct effect on him and all the other children, not just from this community, but from other communities. The reason for his firing may be that they lost confidence in his ability to run the rec center. Well, they've just elevated the people that he's hired, he's trained, that he had direct leadership over, and he led them in that direction, and I just, I feel that it was just, it was not the right decision, and maybe there's more wrong decisions that could come from that, and it was just a reactive, instead of a, something that you would just take into account and maybe do the corrective actions. Talk to somebody, give them a chance to make things better, but I really, I don't think that, Chief, you're the right person for the city manager position. I think that there are other candidates out there that we should explore. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Interim City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
No.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dalther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Congratulations, City Manager. Well, I'm a little premature on that one, but I just want to say that, thank you very much for your leadership over the past five months. I think the city is very lucky to have you lead us. Thank you. We have no new business, and the floor is now open to public comment.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did we do the support of Federal Transit Administration grant?
We did not, no. We missed it.
We jumped right over that.
What number was that?
That was number G.
It was on the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda, on the first page.
Didn't we approve the consent agenda?
The consent agenda's been approved, you don't need to do anything.
Okay, all right.
My mistake, thank you.
All right, so the floor is now open for public comment, and please remember to be respectful and to speak directly into microphone, give your name and your home address.
Give them to the clerks, she'll get them out.
Yeah, if you state your name and your address, and then he'll start when you start speaking. Thank you.
My name is Lori Marsh, and I'm at 14240 Palm Street. And I'm at 14240 Palm Street, and we're residents and business owners here in Madeira Beach, and Shoreline Island Resort is the hotel that my husband's family has owned and established. It was established in 1964. My grandfather also built some of the buildings in John's Pass, so we've been part of this community for many, many years. Shoreline is one of the few hotels in the area that hasn't become condos, and we are just right in between here and John's Pass. I'm very happy that I get to raise my three children, they're seven, five, and two, here in Madeira Beach. I'm excited for what is going to be Madeira Beach, I'm excited that we have such a beautiful community, and I love the experience of living in a small town, even in a place that is so urban. I'm here tonight because part of the joy of raising our children is being able to talk about sustainability and how we live so closely with the ecosystem, with the ocean. We have first, we see firsthand with the care of the turtles and with the manatees and the dolphins, all the things that we're able to visually show our kids, it's such an opportunity, and our business absolutely relies on the land, it's incredibly important. For our children, though, it doesn't make sense to buy organic or locally-produced foods when we can also use the land that we have as a benefit for education. My kids learn the responsibility of, and so I'm asking for chickens, the ordinance. My kids have learned the responsibility of shoveling and the energy that it takes to keep a pet alive, fed, and clean. They learn that food isn't just available because Publix is open or not, in the case of the last couple of weeks when we had that, when we had Irma. We have the ability to feed a family of five with probably between four and six chickens, depending on your egg consumption, but my two-year-old eats about four a day, so, you know, you need a couple. I'm here tonight to ask that you allow the county's ordinances for backyard chicken supply here as well. I am not asking for you to rewrite any, reinvent wheels, but we live in Pinellas County, and there are established ordinances and regulations in order to limit and void adverse impacts on neighboring properties and residents. We permit dogs, and we should permit chickens as well. So why chickens? Because hens are quieter than dogs, fresh, organic eggs are healthier for you and the environment, backyard chickens lead happy, healthy lives, kept in attractive coops, and composted droppings can help teach children about recycling and reducing and reusing. And cities all over America are allowing and encouraging backyard hens. They're fun, they're educational, and they make great neighbors. And that's all. Five seconds.
Hi. I just came up here to, you did it. I just came to talk to you, and thank you for such a wonderful job. I came home to, when I left during the hurricane, I said goodbye to my house, I left it, it's on the water. And I came back, I had to walk in because there was a tree across the street, and, but the house was fine, and I want to thank you and your crew for the fantastic job you did. It didn't take you any time at all. It was the best thing I ever saw. I mean, that tree was gone in no time, I could get up and down the street, the cleanup was miraculous, you cleaned up all the garbage. My son lives in Seminole.
My son lives in Seminole. You still go to Seminole, and it's still all over the place. You go to St. Pete, they got trees with orange things around them, they still have garbage all over the place. We all need to thank you, Dave, and your crew. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to take the credit for that, but it's all our crew, the public work staff, the sanitation staff, all of those people, without power, most of them, for eight days, they never missed a day of work, none of them. That's a commitment that a lot of other cities don't have. These folks were here, boots on the ground, every day. They never left, so I'm only as good as the folks around me, and I'm lucky to have a great crew. Thank you.
301 Second Street East, Madeira Beach. When it started earlier, Commissioner Dilworth said that as far as public comment, we'll tell you how you should do your public comment. You should come and listen to things that may not interest you, may have no effect on you, but it's best that you sit here, for no matter how long the meeting is, before you come and you speak about something that's in your neighborhood that maybe you just want to bring to the attention of the board, or maybe it's a public service that you're offering to bring to the attention of the board. It's something that they feel is personal enough to come and take some time and do it. If I could say, Section 1.4 of our city charter states that open meetings, the title of the section is "open meetings," "All meetings of the Board of Commissioners shall be open to the public as prescribed by state law. Rules of commission shall provide that citizens shall have reasonable opportunity to be heard." A reasonable opportunity is in the beginning, as it's been for years and years and years. Madam, when you started running, you started coming to meetings, so you got to see how things ran and things like that. The idea of it having in the beginning is exactly for that. Many times, it's older people, they can't wait three, four hours to go through everything and all. It's just a public service that you're doing. Now, there's a lot of contention, so yeah, in the beginning, you get your public comment, there's things that people are coming up and expressing their opinion about whether they like or dislike certain parts of the commission or the city or the way it's being run. But that's part of the job. That's part of the job. You don't turn around and slap everybody in the face and say, "Okay, now you're going to get punished. You want to talk against me? I'll put you at the end of the bus." And then you see how much you want to talk. So if you think you're fooling somebody with these little snide remarks about having more public input and listening and learning more, do yourselves a favor. Put it back to where it was, take whatever's gone. You don't answer the questions. I came up here and talked about some things, you don't give an answer, and you're not going to give an answer now. So I don't see what the difference is. You sit there, do your crossword puzzle if you want, or think about what you're going to drink after the meeting, and then just let the people say what they have to say. It's important to them. They took the time to come and to speak to you. A lot of times, they're shaken, they're scared, because they're not, they're so afraid to speak in public, but they're coming up because they feel it's important. Don't slap them in the face and tell them, "Well, now you're going to wait three or four hours before I let you speak." Think this over again, and I think you'll take a lot of heat off of the table if you just turn around and say, "You know, maybe it is better if we have the public comment," where it's been forever. And every, every meeting that you go to, county, state, or anything, public comment is in the beginning. They take it right off the top and get it out of the way. Thank you.
John Hendricks, 569 Normandy Road, Madeira Beach. I have to agree with what Steve said on public comments. It's like you're just waiting a lot of folks out so they'll go away before they have a chance to comment. It makes no sense for us to sit through the whole meeting. So that's my two cents worth on that. When y'all came into office, I had a meeting with the mayor, two months after you were in office. I asked the mayor what the plan was. Her comment was, "Well, I've only been in office for two months. We don't have a plan yet." Actually, there was a plan in place coming in, that was to fire the city manager, the city clerk. We have emails on that that stated such. So far, what has been done for the city is that we've spent $135,000 to pay off the ex-city manager and city clerk. We've paid $135,000 to pay off Madeira Beach United, attorneys on lawsuits and other lawsuits. There's more lawsuits coming. The income streams have been demolished that were built by the previous administration and the previous city manager. Actually, apparently, all you want going on in this city is nothing. The traffic is not from people in Madeira Beach. The traffic is from all these beach communities coming and going off of Barrier Island. They're going to Walmart, they're going here and there, they're going to the school, they're going to the Publix. It's not Madeira Beach traffic, it's tourist traffic, it's the other areas. But now we're getting rid of our financial streams that are coming. We've got, you know, there's a wave runner sitting out there on the floating dock that I think belongs to our city manager. It's been there for a while. I know several people have commented about it. How long is that going to stay? There's a little revenue stream there, charging dockage. People have to charge or pay for slips at the marina. But the wheels have fallen off, the wheels have fallen off this city. You don't want anything going on. You've alienated oil salts, you've alienated other groups around that were bringing money and tourists into this city, seafood festival, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with that. You're just destroying this community we had, and it's going to stop. It's going to stop real soon.
My name is Ron Loggett, 13231 Gulf Lane, and I want to compliment the city for several things. First of all, passing that ordinance on marijuana restrictions, not having in the city. I think what will happen is you'll see what happens to other cities that are doing this, that are allowing this. The other thing I want to compliment is the Public Works Department. I have property over in Hillsborough County that still has trash on it, has not been picked up. I was very pleasantly surprised when I came back on the island to see everything removed. I think it's a very good thing for us, for the citizens here, and also for the people to come and visit the city. The other thing is I want to thank you all for approving our new city manager. I think it was the right choice y'all did. And I want to congratulate everyone that was been appointed to the commissions on the different budgets, the committees. It's good to see people come in and volunteer. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Jim Everett, 15458 First Street East, here in Madeira Beach. I just want to reiterate a statement that Commissioner Lister made earlier about the handbook and the general following of the charter. It states in the charter that that's supposed to be addressed at the next meeting, and here we are, gosh, how many months later, finally bringing it up? So I would just like to see a little bit better adherence to our city governing document as opposed to whatever you guys want to do. So it's there for a reason, and it needs to be followed. Now, you've got a charter committee that's going to meet and deal with that, that might be something they want to address, but we got rules, we need to follow the rules. Thanks.
Can you hear me? Rose Loggett, 13231 Gulf Lane. I'm not going to repeat what Ron said, but I do want to call everybody to attention to the atmosphere. It's a very adversarial atmosphere, and every time we come down to electing somebody or appointing somebody, we have some dissension on the board, which is fine, you know, but it's the facial expressions that we see and the bulliness and the loudness that is expressed. It also comes down to bringing up Shane Crawford and his wife and the past. You know, it's time that everybody pulls together. No one person runs this city, so we all need to take ownership and accountability. And if you think the fish stinks from the head, you are all part of this city, and every time, and every time, and every time, every time you guys bring up something...
Please face the commission.
Take a knee. Take a knee. You know, be that way. But I'm going to call you on it. I'm tired of listening to the garbage, and I think everybody has ownership in it, so you guys need to start working together, start showing some courtesy and respect to one another. It's time that we make the city great again, and we all need to pull together. You know, don't descend just because you want to descend. Descend because you have a good reason to do so. And let's stop bringing up the past and the firing of Shane Crawford and his wife. You all know that was judged as being right, and it should have never happened the way that it happened. If he had had integrity, honesty, and the city would have been run the way it should have been run. So I have my opportunity to speak, and I will speak, and I expect courtesy from you guys. If you don't like what I say, then get up here and say what you want to say, but I don't need your kibitzing back there. Every time, there's no reason for Shane to be here except to do exactly what's happening right now. So I think we all need to, we all need to look inside and start to judge the way we're acting and not acting, right? So I think we need to pull together, and let's work together and stop fighting one another.
Any other comments? Yes.
15366 Gulf Boulevard, Jim Baggins, three comments. One, build the city from the bottom up. We started, we built Eco Village, seven little houses down the street near the 7-Eleven. They sold very quickly. We're in the process of building six homes on North Bay Shore Drive. I've lived in this city since 2001. Number two is increase property values. I have three real estate offices along the beaches here, and this place is known as the slum of the beaches. I'm sorry to say this, I live here, that's not why it's called that, I don't think, but might be. We have to build the city up. Number three, we need to increase bed taxes. That comes from hotels and legal short-term rentals. People are hurting in this city, they're renting properties illegally to make income, to make things work. We get people coming in here and say, "I want to buy a house, but not in Madeira Beach." There's too much animosity here, there's too much garbage going on, and when we look at everybody saying, "Not in my backyard," that we don't want any building, look at what's next door to you. We have to tear down the other stuff. I'm not going to build any more houses in here unless it changes. So thanks.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, members of the commission. I'd like to reintroduce myself. I'm Attorney Jay E. Bear. I represented Shane and Cheryl Crawford in a matter that was settled several months ago before this commission. First and foremost, I would like to direct my comments, they are citizens of Madeira Beach, and I think they have every right to be here. And certainly, they have a right to listen, and they have a right to have input, and they have a right for me to speak on their behalf, so calling them out and saying they have no right to be here is just unfortunate. I would agree with the young lady that just spoke that said we do need to begin healing, but I have been contacted, my law firm, by several concerned citizens who have asked us to start investigating and formulating legal theories about where issues that we need to discuss in the future, including but not limited violation of sunshine laws and recall issues. So I'm letting you know now that I've had a preliminary meeting with them, and I'm going to be working with the concerned citizens of Madeira Beach, and LLC will be formed, and we may be moving forward. But I just think it's inappropriate to not allow Shane and Cheryl to come to their city and participate in a meeting, so I felt it was important. Additionally, I would echo the comments that were previously made about moving the public comment. And I realize, Mayor Black, certainly test-driving something may be in the commission's best interest, but I would echo the comments of Mr. Lister, that clearly, we do not want to silence or restrict or limit our citizens in any way. And you are chosen to serve, and you serve at the pleasure of the people of Madeira Beach. So I'd ask that you would take that into consideration on behalf of the citizens, and have that public, this public portion, is now five minutes after nine o'clock, and people are just getting their voices heard. And I would echo those comments and strongly recommend that as a positive change moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Any more public comment? Yes.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive. I am so disappointed and discouraged in our recently-elected officials, who I voted for, unfortunately. And I am 100% behind the recall of you two, both Dorhert and Oakley, and hopefully you will fall shortly behind them. It would be best, before the recall starts, if you just resign and save the city lots of money. Thank you.
Nope. Okay, I think we're there. Deborah Rogowski, 17117 Gulf Boulevard, North Reddington Beach. I've adopted Madeira Beach, I come to every meeting I can. My church is here, my library is here, my rec center, my grocery. So people say I don't have a right to be here, I'm also a... I'm also a Gulf Beaches Rotary member, and I watch all the workshops. And Nancy, you said, "We'll see how it goes with public comment at the end." I don't think it goes well. I think what it says is, "I don't want public comment." So I'm hoping that you would reconsider that. And all the workshops are at 2:00, so I can't come, and I do watch them online, so I hope I didn't hear that you can't watch it unless you can watch it at 2:00. Because we do want to be involved, and I just ask you to do the public comments in the beginning.
Anyone else? Public comment is now closed. Next, we have reports and correspondence. City Commission, any reports?
I just need to make a statement. In my neighborhood, Dave, I know that Keystone's down there working really hard, and from the 7-Eleven down to Boca Seaga Drive, with the pervious concrete is very good. I mean, they're really nice, I like what they've done, but I'm getting a lot of people who know where I live, because they walk right beside my house, who are really tired of the dirt road that we built two months ago. It's a mud hole. And I understand the King Tide and the Harvest Moon and Mother Nature coming through, but if we have to, you know, build with FEMA standards as far as a 100-year flood plane, we're going to have to build with those check valves, so that that doesn't happen on a King Tide or even a High Tide. It's really getting bad down there. I know you're on top of them. I talked to the guys that are in the white pickup trucks, too, but really have to start concentrating on that. And if we need to have a meeting, you know, let's call a meeting, because I have a lot of concerned citizens down there who said, "You need to speak up, and you need to speak up loud at City Hall." And I, again, Dave, you and I have talked about it, so go ahead and tell me what you're going to say.
I will. Commissioners, Mayor, speaking of Boca Seaga, the project is not on schedule. We're a little bit behind. The tides did not just flood Boca Seaga, flooded most of the areas in town that are low. We're on an island. Alf, you agree with Al Gore or not, I don't know, but the water's rising. We're putting, we've, you know, we've gone back and forth with the check valves. We've worked extensively to find one now that works for a lot less money. So instead of, I think we talked about doing two or four check valves, you'll see that number jump up to like 10 or 15. So it's been heard. We know. We're working on it. It's, we have the plans from Al Carrier's group at Dueling Associates. It's just a matter of throwing them out on the street now, getting the bids back, and getting these valves installed. About $2,500 per valve versus about $18,000 per valve. So I'm glad we didn't pull the trigger. We're going to get a better product, we're going to get it for a lot less money. It'd be easier for us to maintain, but, you know, it definitely takes some time. So please let your constituents know that they're going to see us, and I'll go step on somebody's throat in the morning.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Any other commission reports? City Attorney? City, Acting City Manager?
I know the hour's late, and I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but there's a few things I'd like to say. Number one, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity that you've given me. Again, I reiterate, I didn't ask for this vacancy to occur here in the city government. This was not my idea. I was actually just filling a vacancy, trying to make sure that our city operations and our city government was operating to the level that was expected during that vacancy. I had nothing to do with that vacancy occurring. Yeah, and I'm really, you know, want to get past what some of the individuals were saying, the drama that's going on within our community. We've got to get back to running the city and coming together as one. I saw some individuals over the past few weeks, and they were saying, "You know what the big deal is? Absolutely nothing's happened in the city government in the last five months." I'm like, "Wow," I was really kind of taken back by that comment, and so I really wanted to sit back and evaluate that and see if that was true, and see exactly what has happened in the five months. And actually, there's been quite a few things that have happened. You know, we're definitely in a rebuilding process, and we're doing that by getting good competent people on board to help manage this city, starting off with our Finance Director, Walt. Walt did a phenomenal job putting that budget together, you know, in a short amount of time, maintaining our millage rate. A phenomenal job to Walt to jump into that and get those things accomplished for us. Our interim city clerk has been inundated with public records requests, just amazing amount of work that she's had to put out just to keep us above sea level. You know, thank goodness we hired a city clerk that'll be coming on board, and our goal will be to have her start next Monday. So I think that's going to be a huge plus for us. We hired an executive assistant that's done a great job for us, just keeping things operational. One big issue for us was the stewardship report. We had two of those that were expiring, and we were in jeopardy of losing those things, Archibald and the Causeway Park report. So, yeah, my hat's off to her for jumping into that and making all those things happen. We also had, I'll get to legal expenses here in a minute, but our city planner, Linda's out of the room right now, but Linda's going to do a great job for us. I was so happy to be able to hire her and get her put in place here. You know, we were actually contracting out all of our planning functions, and we were about $125,000 over budget in what we were doing, because we had never replaced our city planner. So we're getting all those things put into place, and slowly but surely, we'll get this thing back on track. Some of our legal issues that's been going on, you know, I was thankful to be able to spend time with the mayor during the mediation process that we went through here a few weeks ago. That was a win-win situation. The developers are getting part of what they want, the city's going to get revenue and part of what they want, and the developers are going to get the process completed as well. So I'm hoping with this next agreement that's coming up here this month with the other developers, that we'll be able to read a similar type of agreement, so everyone's going to win. You know, that last legal bout that we went through, I was fortunate enough to be able to negotiate down that price from $300,000 to, I think, $135,000. But that's a lot of money to be giving away when we could be using it for city functions. And it's got to be a cooperative agreement, or we're all going to lose a tremendous amount of money in this process. We've got numerous issues ahead of us, so we've got to get everybody back on board for, you know, there's been a lot of catch-up that we've been playing in this process. We've had items within the city government that needed to be inspected that were falling woefully behind. One of them was two years behind schedule, you know, fire inspections, the elevator inspections, you know, those kind of things have to be, you know, taken into consideration and taken care of. We're continuing to work diligently on our underground utilities, our stormwater projects, and now Rex Place is coming up. That's going to be another big issue for us. We're talking about getting a direction that we're going in this city. We've actually set up a meeting with the Florida Institute of Government to get us together to talk about what we see for the future of our community, and that's what we need. We need a common focus of where we're going and how we're going to get there. And it's a monumental task, so when people say, "Nothing's happened in the city government in the past five months," I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, look around, there's a tremendous amount of things that's happened." Oh, I almost forgot, during this whole process, we had Hurricane Irma come to town. You know, that committed our city staff for at least three weeks. You know, while the actual event may have affected the citizens and residents of our town for only a few days, being without power, the cleanup opportunities, the preparation that we all went through was monumental. So it's been a long process, but it's been all of the city staff working together to make those things happen for us. So my hat's off to all of our city workers for the job that they've done, you know, pulling this thing together and getting our city back on track. So again, I thank you for your confidence and look forward to serving you as your city manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Interim City Clerk, any correspondence or reports?
No, ma'am.
This meeting is now adjourned at 9:19.[1746.44][1746.44][music]